Six thirty, isn't it?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Peter Angelini, Chairman. I'm joined by the other two members of Legal Affairs, Ward One Counselor Robert Tossi and Ward Two Counselor Pauline Cormier. Excuse me. This is Petition 24-25. Thomas M. Bavensi Esquire, on behalf of Steve Boucher, requests to amend the zoning district map for parcel 352-6 such that entire parcel will be zoned Residence B, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. I don't see the applicant here tonight. Mr. President, let me begin by saying that we had asked the Planning Board for a referral on this. We did receive a letter from Stephanie Witten explaining that the next Planning Board meeting will be on February 3rd, and at that time they will schedule the public hearing for this petition. And once that has been established and they conduct the public hearing, they will send the referral down to us. So at this time, I have no questions. I'm going to go to members of Legal Affairs. Counselor Tossi?
No, none.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
It doesn't look like there's much that we can accomplish here this evening.
I agree. Any members of the council? All right. Let me go to the public then. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 24-25? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to Petition 24-25? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 24-25? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I'm going to keep this hearing open, but when it comes up for the second time, we'll be looking for further time. Okay, so none of the apparitions wanted to speak? So I suspect based on the information from the Planning Board that we'll continue the public hearing maybe till 2:24 as opposed to our first meeting in February? It sounds... And give the petition further time when it comes up on our calendar. That sounds like a proper way to proceed, Mr. President. Thank you. Unless anybody has anything else, I guess we now wait until the public forum.
Conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We don't have anybody signed up, but is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? And for a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, I will declare the public forum closed. We will begin the regular meeting at 7:00. [Music] Okay, at 7:00, please join me in the pledge to open the meeting. We will now take the roll call of the members present, starting with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Arndger.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Tossi.
Present.
Councilor Robbins.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. All nine members are in attendance. We have a report from the Chairwoman of Records.
Yes, Mr. President, I have reviewed the minutes from the January 13th meeting. I find them to be in good order, and I ask that they be placed on file.
That may be done, unless there's an objection? Okay, moving on to communications from the mayor, starting with C-32.
Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $65,000 be made to Monticic Recovery Center out of the capital expense line and the general fund, the same amount to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund.
C-32 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-32 is given regular course. Moving on to C-33.
Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $25,000 be made to the Gallagher Building Department Building and Grounds expense account, the same to be transferred from Gallagher Building Fund.
C-33 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-33 is given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 25-25.
Crown Jewelers request to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at 12 Lindell Ave, Leominster, Mass.
25-25 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, please, Mr. President.
Very well, 25-25 has been given regular course. Moving on to 26-25.
Hanus Jewelers request to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at 100 Commercial Road, Leominster, Mass.
And 26-25 is also referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, please.
Very well, 26-25 is given regular course. Moving on to 27-25.
Upscale Consignment requests to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at 875 Marion Avenue, Leominster, Mass.
27-25 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, 27-25 has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the financial report, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, the stabilization fund, we began with a balance on July 1st, 2024 of $22,927,553.81. We've earned in interest $297,525.91. And all the appropriations on the, if they're all approved, up through the ones that are on there for the first time, we will have spent $884,350.45. And that will leave us with a balance of $22,340,729.27. The opioid stabilization fund began with a balance of $518,703.20. We got some proceeds from the state in the amount of $172,743.90. And provided the other item that's on there, C-32, if that's approved at the next meeting, we will have spent $133,000. And that would leave us with a balance of $558,447.10. And then the capital stabilization fund began with, and still has, a balance of $2,193,191.62. And that's a financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to finance, and C-28, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C-28, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requesting an appropriation of $25,000 be made to the City Clerk postage account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. There is an explanation here that the City Clerk is respectfully requesting an appropriation of $25,000 to the City Clerk postage account. This money will be used to pay for first-class postage to mail out the 2025 census, which is obviously required. There is currently $3,512 remaining in the account, which will be used for other operational postage needs. So this is a requirement that we send out these censuses. I believe they're a little behind this year because they were waiting for this money. So it would be my recommendation, I'll ask you to check with members of my committee, that we grant C-28.
Very well, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini.
I think it unanimous, Mr. President.
Thank you. You've heard unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-28. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-28, please recognize your usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-28 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $25,000 be made to the City Clerk postage account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed, the order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C-29.
C-29, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $73,165 be made to the Police Department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. I did have a good discussion with Chief Malatis this morning. We were actually on the phone while the earthquake happened, but neither of us felt it. And he explained to me that we are currently, they're currently attempting to hire four officers. And he also anticipates two officers to retire prior to the end of this fiscal year. And this appropriation would cover all equipment, medical expenses, academy tuition, and ammunition needed for the academy. As a result, I respectfully request this amount in additional monies. So as we, most of us probably know, there are normally 62 patrolmen. We are currently down to 58, and again, we anticipate two more to be retiring by the end of the fiscal year. That'll bring us to 56. So he did explain to me that this amount would be for, to outfit all six of the new officers, so that he wouldn't have to come back here for an additional, for money for an additional two. And there is a very good breakdown, although I had to literally break out my magnifying glass to read it. But it is all there, and it does explain in detail a breakdown of how all this money will be spent. Most of it is on, you know, the academy and ammunition and probably bulletproof vests and all those sorts of things that's required to outfit a new officer. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-29, and ask you to check with members of my committee.
Very well, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-29. Is there any further discussion, let's start with Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. Through the Chair, to the Finance Chair. The request says four new officers, and two are retiring. But then, when you look at the detailed breakout of all of the requests, monetary requests, it's for six people. So I'm confused about the six.
Right. As I explained, he's anticipating that we're gonna hire those other two. He's gonna, we're taking care of four now, but we're gonna put money in there for the other two, so that he won't have to come back for supplemental appropriation. So he's anticipating between now and the end of the fiscal year that they need to outfit six officers, and so he's just taking care of it all in one shot.
Okay.
And if, for some reason, those two officers don't arrive by the end of fiscal year, they'll either encumber the money, or they'll get closer to free cash and taking care of that way.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Frida, did you have a question?
Yeah, through the Chair. Is this in conjunction with some of the grant money, federal grant money?
That I don't know. None of that was mentioned to me. This is all coming out of stabilization, so that I do not.
Well, I know that, but I meant for the hiring. We just approved and not too long ago, some federal funding for police.
Yeah, some of that might be paying for these positions for a while. I could check with him and let you know.
Yeah, that would be good to know.
Yeah, I'll find out how, you know, how this is all playing into that, absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-29 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $73,165 be made to the Police Department expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed, the order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C-31.
C-31, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $6,250 be made to the Building Department Building and Grounds expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed, the order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C-31.
C-31, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $6,250 be made to the Building Department Building and Grounds expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is due to an unexpected, no heat-related expense at the old police station. So I did have a conversation with the mayor's office about this. Obviously, the building is vacant, there's certainly no one that, you know, reports to work there every day, but probably a little storage or something at the moment. As it was explained to me, the heat is kept very low in there, you know, just enough so there was not any pipe problem. But the heating system itself was having issues, and they had to get them fixed. So that is what this is for. I was ensured that they don't anticipate any other problems. It was just, you know, an issue with the system, they had to get it fixed, and it should be good to go to maintain a little heat in the building, so that it's, you know, we don't have any problems with frozen pipes or anything like that. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-31. I'll ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Councilor Angelini.
If we have any choice, I agree.
All right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-31. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Frida.
Just out of curiosity, is there any discussions about what might be, that building might be useful?
That was, I certainly asked that question, and at this time, there is no, there is no plan for the building, you know, because obviously, I share probably, you know, I can imagine you share some concerns as well about letting a building, we all know what happens when you let a building sit vacant, even if someone's going in there, you know, checking on it, and there's a little heat, and, you know, problems start. But there is no, there is no plan for the building as of now. I asked that specific question.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no additional discussion, all those in favor of granting C-31, please recognize your usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-31 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $6,250 be made to the Building Department Building and Grounds expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Once again, for the unexpected, no heat-related expense at the old police station. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed, the order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to legal affairs, is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, thank you. 24-25, again, is Thomas M. Bovenzi Esquire, on behalf of Steve Boucher, request to amend the zoning district map for parcel 352-6, such that entire parcel will be zoned Residence B, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. As you know, Mr. President, we conducted a public hearing early this evening. We kept that public hearing open. We're anticipating a referral sometime late February from the planning board, hopefully. And therefore, I would be requesting further time, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
All right, so further time and a continued public hearing date. All right, Councilor Tossi.
I agree.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
All right, so the recommendation would be further time with a continued public hearing date at 2:24, and I don't think we have anything scheduled that evening, right? So why don't we go with 6:40 on that? Any further discussion on those two items?
for the unexpected, no heat-related expense at the old police station. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to legal affairs, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, thank you. Twenty-four dash twenty-five, again, is Thomas M. Bovenzi Esquire, on behalf of Steve Boucher, request to amend the zoning district map for parcel 352-6, such that entire parcel will be zoned Residence B, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. As you know, Mr. President, we conducted a public hearing early this evening. We kept that public hearing open. We're anticipating a referral sometime late February from the Planning Board, hopefully. And therefore, I would be requesting further time, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
All right, so further time and a continued public hearing date. All right, Council Tossi?
I agree.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
All right, so the recommendation would be further time with a continued public hearing date at 2:24, and I don't think we have anything scheduled that evening, right? So why don't we go with 6:40 on that? Any further discussion on those two items? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time and continuing the public hearing, please recognize your usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, that may be done. Moving on to Ways and Means, is the chairwoman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an appointment. C-30, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested the City Council vote to remove Ray Racine from the School Building Committee for Fallbrook Elementary School and approve Jake Fleming to the membership of the School Building Committee for Fallbrook Elementary School. This was given last course on our last date. I think we are all familiar with the, with the prospects of the new elementary school, and I think the completion date that they're shooting for is 2029. I think we're all familiar with Jake Fleming and the work that he's done over at the DPW. I think this is just a matter of course, is, it'd be my expectation that Ray Racine would be looking to potentially retire before this building in this project is completed. So I think it makes sense that Jake be in from the state, Mr. Jake Fleming be in from the beginning of this, and be able to follow through. So it would be my position to grant the appointment of Jake Fleming to the School Building Committee for Fallbrook Elementary School. And I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Very well, Council Oringer?
I agree.
And Council David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-30. Is there any discussion? Council Frida?
Just a question through the chair, seeing that the vice chair mentioned a completion date of 2029 would indicate that we're gonna build the building?
I guess that would be a possible.
That's a possible. That's the speculation. That is what the proposal is at this point. All word that, I've heard, not official word, but all the word that I've heard is that the cost.
And I know that there's a meeting Thursday night, but I'm just curious, does anybody know what the state reimbursement would be? I know in the seventies, I would hope.
Yeah, but to be frank and clear for the public, it's not like the old days where if the 70% reimbursement, you get 70 cents on every dollar, because there's caps on all the different types of construction. And you might be actually, in real dollars, more like 40% reimbursement. And I don't think anyone knows the exact answer to that question yet. So funding this school is going to be a big issue. Anything else? Okay. You heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee for the vacating Ray Racine and the appointing Jake Fleming and his steed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner. All right, C-30 has been granted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to new business and the first reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is formally petition 15-25. And the City of Leominster, in the year 2025, in ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Amending Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances is hereby amended by deleting and adding the following text regarding the MU2 zoning district. Amending Article 3, Section 22-17, underlying districts' table of uses, by deleting the entries for apartments multi-family dwelling under District MU2 and replacing such entries with Y. And further, by amending Article 7, Section 22-40.3, table of dimensional regulations, by deleting the two rows for District MU2 and replacing them with the following two rows. And then, there's a chart that shows the MU2 district, the qualifier, under the qualifier heading is multifamily dwellings, industrial, and other. The next column has minimum lot area square feet, in parentheses, acres. In the first box underneath, 2,000 per unit, 10,000 for industrial, 10,000 for other. The third box, third heading is maximum impervious coverage, percent of total lot area. Under the multifamily dwellings column, it's none. Under the industrial column, it's none. And under other, it's none. Then we go to minimum feet. The first column is lot frontage, multifamily dwelling column 50, industrial column 50, other 50. Then we have lot width, multifamily dwellings none, industrial none, other none. Then we have side yard, multifamily dwellings 15, industrial 100, other 30. Then we have front yard, multifamily dwellings 15, industrial 25, other 15. Next column is rear yard, multifamily dwellings 15, industrial 100, other 15. Then we have next, subheading maximum height feet, multifamily dwelling 70, industrial 70, other 70. And the last column is numbers of stories, multifamily dwelling row is four, industrial is four, and other is four. And further, by amending Article 4, Section 28.2, general provisions, by deleting the text in Section 28.2.1, and inserting in its place the following. Projects in the MU2 district may consist of residential, commercial, industrial, or mixed-use developments. And further, by amending Article 4, Section 28.3, by deleting in their entirety Sections 28.3.2, comma, 28.3.3, and 28.3.4, comma, and redesignating Section 28.3.5 as 28.3.2. And further, by amending Article 4, Section 28.4, dimensional regulations, by deleting Section 28.4.1 in its entirety, and by redesignating Section 28.4.2 as 28.4.1, and redesignating Section 28.4.3 as 28.4.2. And further, amending Section, Article 4, Section 28.5.1, buffer, by deleting the text in Section 28.5.1.1, and inserting in its place the following. Notwithstanding the requirements of the table of dimensional requirements, the Planning Board may require vegetated buffers up to 30 feet between uses within the MU2 district at its discretion during site plan approval. And by further amending Article 4, Section 28.5.1, buffer, by deleting the text in Section 28.5.1.2, and inserting in its place the following. A buffer area shall be provided between any buildings in the MU2 district in any adjacent residential zoning district. This buffer shall consist of natural, undisturbed trees and vegetation to the maximum extent possible. The width of the buffer and planting scheme shall be at the discretion of the Planning Board, but in no case shall be required to exceed 50 feet. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Council Tossi?
I agree.
And Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, formerly 15-25. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this by roll call vote, starting with Council David Cormier?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council Oringer?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Tossi?
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
Council Frida?
Yea.
That shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to one. The first reading of formerly 15-25 has been adopted. Moving on to 16-25.
Thank you, Mr. President. 16-25, this is formerly 16-25, which is Monarch Regional Planning Commission, Glenn Eaton, Executive Director, request to amend the Leominster zoning ordinance and map to create the multifamily overlay district in accordance with the MBTA Communities Act.
Can I make a motion that we waive most of the reading?
Unless anybody has any objection, Mr. Chairman, you may summarize this. Obviously, we can't read the maps. A lot of it is maps that can be accessed at the Planning Board and the City Clerk's office, all of which now create the new multifamily overlay district, or MFOD. And I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as, I might note that as far as the Attorney General's Office was concerned, once the City Council voted on this, they considered it adopted. So this is basically a formality, and I thank my colleague for waiving the reading. This is quite extensive. So this is indeed the first reading of an ordinance, formerly petition 16-25, which we know is a multifamily overlay district, which within the overlay district creates the opportunity for development of up to 20 units per acre in density. And again, the maps and the language, specific language of this overlay district are available, both at Planning Development Office and at the Clerk's Office, and maps are available as well, as the president stated. So on page one, we start with the City of Leominster, in the year 2025, in ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Amending Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning is hereby amended as follows. So it starts with definitions, affordable dwelling unit, applicant, area median income, by right, talks a little bit about that. Then there's an amended table of uses, or the table uses as it will appear in the zoning book on the second page, continues on the third page. And it, Section 22-33A, multifamily overlay district, or MFOD, talks about purpose. Let me just say that the purpose of the MFOD is to allow multifamily housing as of right in accordance with Section 3A of the Zoning Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. This zoning allows for as of right multifamily housing to encourage, and then of course, it gives, you know, location allowed uses, dimensional regulations, underlying zoning, affordability, and there's an entire, several sections on affordability. It also describes the parking that's permitted, and as you know, this particular zoning only required 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit with more than two bedrooms. Generally, that would have been two units, two parking spaces per two bedrooms. It's a site plan review in the multifamily overlay district is something that we had to create, to have a specific site plan approval process for the multifamily overlay district is something that we did create in the past. And we would then, the table of dimensional regulations, which appears here. And further, by amending the zoning map pursuant to Article 1, Section 22-6, by adding the multifamily overlay district MFOD as shown on the map approved by the City Council. So that, in essence, is the summary of the first reading of this ordinance, and I would recommend we adopt the first reading, Mr. President, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Council Tossi?
I agree.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Is there any discussion relative to the adoption? Okay, this will be by roll call, starting with Council David Cormier?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council Oringer?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Tossi?
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
Council Frida?
Yea.
That shall be recorded as yea. The first reading of 16-25 is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to 23-25.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. 23-25, Union Square Realty Trust, James Exeris, trustee, 507 Lancaster Street, Leominster, Mass., requests that the City Council amend current zoning of 493, 497, 501, and 507 Lancaster Street from MU1 to Business A. And once again, this is the first reading of an ordinance of petition formerly known as 23-25. The City of Leominster, in the year 2025, in ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Amending Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning is hereby amended by amending the zoning map established pursuant to Section 22-6, such that the following parcels shall be situated in the Business B zoning district. 493 Lancaster Street, 497 Lancaster Street, 501 Lancaster Street, and 507 Lancaster Street. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well, nice to have one mercifully short.
Indeed.
Council Tossi?
I agree.
And Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of ordinance formerly 23-25. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council David Cormier?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council Oringer?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Tossi?
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
Council Frida?
Yea.
That shall be recorded as yea. The first reading is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Is there any old business to come before us? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
I have a quick question. I want to go back to C-33. So through the chair, to the Finance Chair, this was the request, communication from the mayor, asking for $25,000 for continuing upgrades to the Gallagher Building. Could we have some detail, could we have a list of the upgrades?
Sure.
And what this $25,000 is going to be used specifically on?
Absolutely. I will get all that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? All right, anything on the community calendar? Council Robbins?
This was alluded to earlier, and the last time I'll mention it, because it's coming up. The Fallbrook Building Committee informational meeting is this Thursday at 6:00 PM at Fallbrook in the cafeteria.
Thank you, Councilor. And Council Frida?
Yeah, it's not really community calendar, but it's just a little bit of good news. I was, I was asked this weekend at the Mass. Municipal by the mayor's office to accept an award for Sean Como, who is our code enforcement for OSHA at the DPW. Unfortunately, his mom passed away, and he was not able to make it. But because of Sean's activities and all his work, Leominster received a safety leadership award from our insurer, Mass. Local Insurance Agency.
Very good.
Which gives us a lot of points and reduces some of the costs of the insurance. So it was presented, it's the only safety leadership award that was awarded by MYHA. It was to Sean for the city, but Sean's award will be coming. So I did send a message to Sean and asked if he'd come to the February 10th meeting.
Okay.
They're gonna FedEx his award to us, and then I can elaborate a little bit on what Sean has done to arrive at this.
Excellent.
There's a lot of work that he's done with the DPW, and there's just tons of accolades for him and all the MYHA leadership, and what an outstanding person he is to work with.
Wonderful to hear. I show what we all share in condolences for his loss of his mom, and we look forward to seeing him on February 10th. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anything else? Otherwise, yes, Council Pauline Cormier?
Mr. President, actually, if I can go through the chair to Council Robbins, you mentioned that the meeting for the Fallbrook School is this Thursday?
The 30th.
And where was? And where was, okay.
The 30th, the 30th in the cafeteria.
Okay, no, sorry, I was looking at something different.
Okay.
I apologize. I just wanted to clarify. I had, I had something that had a different date on it. I thought it was the same thing, but it was minus.
All right, I want to take a motion to adjourn. Council Shalfo Zephyr, you're quick at the draw. Seconded, Council Aringer. All those in favor, we are adjourned.
The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by the Careless Insurance Agency at www.carelessinsuranceagency.com, and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.